Welcome to the Select Board's meeting, August 28, 2018, the Town Hall. Before I begin, I'd just like to take a moment to reflect on Senator John McCain that passed away this past weekend. He was a great American hero and a great patriot. He will be missed. I feel it's appropriate to say something nice. Talking about things, about people that are volunteering. Hatfield does have a firefighter that's been deployed to Montana to do forest firefighting. As you know, out in the West, there's been thousands of acres burning. So, I want to say thank you to Jason Antash for going out to not only helping his town, but helping his country with the firefighting. I am told that the Fire Department does have five certified firefighters. And hats off to them because that's additional certification that's required because it's not the same as just being a firefighter. Talking about the Fire Department, I do want to say thank you to the Firefighters Association. They've donated a new, what I call, a gator. It's a piece of equipment for firefighting. And it's on display at the -- I think they have it on display later this month or so. The Firefighters Association, I believe, has, in the last 18 months, donated $36,625 worth of equipment to the department. So, thank you, Hatfield Firefighters Association, for donating that equipment. And, as you know, they have their big fundraiser coming up in a few months with the bonfires. So, hopefully, everyone will support that. Also, it's back to school this week, so asking all the drivers in town to be extra cautious, watching out for the school buses and the kids. And I do want to say thank you to Chief DeKochek for putting out the new solar speed limit signs on a few of the streets. It's nice to have people know what speed they're going, and it does help make our streets a little bit safer. My last -- also, the Police Department, I've been notified that they have house checks. So, if you're planning on being away for a while and you'd like to have a house check, the Hatfield Department online has a form to fill out, or you can pick up a form during the day at the police station, just making people aware of that. My last announcement this evening would be Treeworks will be at Smith Academy. As you know, Treeworks was a group that's planning on having a cannabis facility at 3 West Street. There will be a question-and-answer period for everybody in town that would like to attend. And that will be on tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow evening, the 29th.
Not 8/29, which will be, yeah, at Smith Academy. So, from me, those are my announcements. Brian, do you have anything?
I do not. No, thank you.
Cindy?
I think you got it covered.
I got it covered, okay.
Would you like to just mention something about the Smith Academy pavilion proposals?
Sure, I'll take that. So, there will be, on Thursday, September 13, at 5:30, at the Hatfield Town Hall, there's an architectural drawing of three potential -- architectural drawings of three potential pavilions for out here at Smith Academy Park, but it's open to the public to come. And, John, I don't know if you can zoom in, but it's also on the website, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, ultimately, they're looking for some feedback on these three proposals from the community. So, please feel free, on Thursday, September 13, at 5:30, to attend the presentation. And that's being held by the Open Space Committee. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, anybody here for public forum? Okay, we'll move to --
Yes.
Yes. Come on in.
Just didn't know if there was an agenda for tonight. The one that's over there is for August 15. I didn't know if there was one for tonight's meeting or not.
Anybody else for public forum? Move for approval of minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of June 13, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minute, session one, from July 31, 2018.
I'll second that one.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minute, session two, from July 31. We had two different items to discuss that evening, if people were wondering why there was a session one and a session two.
I'll second that one.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved.
I was just going to mention, Marlene, we talked about it, we still haven't seen the ones from January 17. Right, the minutes there, yeah. Okay, thanks. Notice they went today.
Okay. We have an application for a three-day liquor license by the Northampton Community. It stated here, "The Northham Community Rowing 20th Anniversary." Is everything with this application in order?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so...
It doesn't need to say "more than Northampton Community" on there? It looks like somebody started to fill out the name of the organization and didn't complete. It says "Northampton Community." Are we okay legally if it doesn't say "Northampton Community Rowing"?
That's just an application.
Okay. But it doesn't matter?
No.
It doesn't matter?
That's not the license.
Right, but I didn't know if you needed it completed.
Yeah, there are other documents that she left of insurance and...
Okay, just wanted to make sure, is that right?
Okay, even though it's a three-day application, they're only looking for one day for September 8, 2018, from 4 to 8:00 PM, and it's a fundraiser for a nonprofit. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to grant the license.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, topic number two, and Marlene can correct me if I'm wrong. There was a piece of property that was under agricultural, which the owner wants to change. That was after Chapter 61A. The owner wants to change it so they can sell it.
Correct.
And the way I understand the law is the town has the first right to try to purchase it and make an agreement with the owner if the town chooses. Presently, the Planning Board has looked at this piece of property, and they do not feel it's in the interest of the town to purchase it, if that's my understanding.
Right, I've spoken with Mr. Wagner, and it's of no interest to the town.
And also, when this land changes out of the Chapter 61, there's additional taxes, I believe.
Rollback taxes, yes.
Back taxes are placed on it for, I don't know how many years.
Usually three.
The representative for the estate is requesting to convert the use of the property, not the entire parcel, just a portion of it, which is identified in your packet, and for future sale.
Okay, this is land off of Cronin Hill Road in Hatfield. Let's see. It's part of an estate. And there's a partial listed on our little packets here, which, it's what, 1.0705 acres they want to convert?
Yes, 45,000 square feet.
A lot, too.
So, the Planning Board hasn't -- feels it's not the interest of the town to purchase it, and...
Well, the Planning Board hasn't actually taken action on it. I talked to Bob Wagner about it, and I don't know if he talked to the rest of the members. I doubt that he did that. But talking to him, he said it's not something that the town would be interested in, as far as the Ag Committee or Conservation hasn't. I haven't talked to anybody on Conservation.
Under the law, though, is it just the Board's decision to decide whether they want...
The Board of Selectmen's decision.
It's not really up to the other committees unless we wanted to...
They are notified in writing, and they're required to be notified by statute. It's the Board of Selectmen that decide to either exercise its option or waive that option.
So, if I may, when were the other boards notified? At the end of July, when this letter came in?
They would have received it the same time I received it, so that would have been July 26. I don't -- it was hand-delivered at the Town Hall. I don't know if they have actually seen it. I scanned it and sent it to Bob Wagner.
I guess my only question would be, once we make a decision, you know, the decision's made, and usually, when it comes to land, you do rely on Open Space or the Ag Committee or what have you. So, I guess I just don't know if we should wait till our next meeting to make sure that everybody within those Planning Board and what have you have actually had a chance to review this.
I will be glad to ask for a response in writing.
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I just -- and I don't know if this -- if the estate is under some sort of a timeline to have to do something.
The town has 120 days to respond, so we're well within that time period.
Okay. I feel a little more comfortable just knowing that everybody had a chance within their own committees to have the conversation personally.
I don't see a problem with that, have the other committees look at it and...
Just to make sure.
Okay.
So, I'll move with table this.
Okay.
Motion to table, till our next meeting, and second it. I'll second that. All right. Next topic will be appointments. We're looking for appointments from a three committee to -- the committee is to do research on whether or not it's feasible for the town to go from a three-member to a five-member board, a select board. And we do have three people that apply it, I believe, right?
Yes.
So, David Keir, I believe, we already appointed. Did we not, back a couple months ago?
I don't have a record of it. I don't have a record. He did express interest right after town meeting, annual town meeting.
Right, I remember that. We can do all three, just to play it safe. I mean, that's fine.
Okay. You make the motion?
Sure. So, I'll make a motion to appoint to the three-member committee charged with finding out exactly what it would take for the town to move from a three-to-five-member committee. I'll make the motion to appoint David Keir, Michael Cahill, and Christopher Smith.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that the charge of the committee, just to be clear, the town meeting vote was not whether we should or shouldn't do this, it was if we move forward, which is what the town meeting wanted us to investigate, what's the process? Whether people are for it or against it, you know, we'll have that at the next town meeting, I guess. But, so these three gentlemen will find out whether, from a statute, state law perspective, what have you, how we would go about going from three to five members, so...
Okay, did you want to give the committee a time limit to get back to it?
I think it says by December 18 in here somewhere, I read that.
It does.
On the charter, December 2018.
I mean, the posting.
December 2018, so...
I think that's ample time, really. I mean, I don't think we're really reinventing the wheel. I think it's a matter of finding the right statutes and laws and what have you of the processes.
But I thought also that the town needed to get some information on whether it makes sense to go from three to five.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, whatever is discovered through that committee, they'll bring -- we'll bring it back to the town and say, here's -- if we do this, here's what's going to happen. And then that's when the town's going to ultimately say, I think, yes or yea or nay on whether they want to do it or not. This is all about the process of getting there, of going, should we go that route.
Now, is this the committee where all three have to get sworn in by the town clerk? So, you'll have to see the town clerk and get sworn in, will you? And we'll send a letter. And thank you for volunteering for the committee, and thank you to Mr. Cahill and Mr. Smith for volunteering the committee.
Letters will be sent to those individuals, and they will have to be sworn in.
Okay, we have -- next item would be capital planning. Capital Planning has submitted who they would like as representing the school committee, which I believe is Jill Robinson.
Yep. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Jill Robinson on behalf of the Hatfield School Committee to the Town of Hatfield Capital Planning Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That'll be it. Next item is Emergency Management Director, so Cindy's got a recruits' excuse. Does Cindy have to excuse herself on this?
Yes, she would.
Yes, thank you.
So, the appointment expires the last meeting. This was on the agenda. The Board of Selectmen appointed the Emergency Management Director to August 31. And at that same meeting, the job description, revised job description, was presented. The Board of Selectmen did not take a vote to accept those revisions, although I don't recall there being any objections to those revisions. Mr. Lesko for the Emergency Management Planning Committee had asked to, you know, get a copy of it, and he wanted to review it, and review it with the Emergency Management Planning Committee. And, to my knowledge, the committee has not met or reviewed that. However, though, I added this to the agenda and talked with the chair.
Yeah, so we didn't have an expired position.
Correct.
Okay. So, the recommendation, you know, for the job description tweaking came from the two chiefs.
That's correct.
And I do remember Ed Bean here from the Emergency Management Committee. So, but they weren't going to meet, if I recall, you know, because it was summer, right? I think he'd said the first or second week of September or something.
Right, I think he was going to be away, too.
Yeah, okay. So, well, I guess I would ask Ed, I mean, I'm fine with the recommendation of the police chief and the fire chief, as far as the job description goes. I don't know how Ed feels. Are you looking that we would need to actually vote to approve the job description?
If the...
At some point.
If the board is ready to do that tonight, yeah, that's -- I didn't...
No, no, I understand.
Put the copy into your packet.
Right.
It is the decision of the Board of Selectmen to approve that.
But also, I think you mentioned that the job description, you had requested the Emergency Management Director to look at the updated job description.
Yeah, and I think he was going to ask the chiefs if there were any questions, so I don't know if anything came back.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Well, I think in fairness to the Emergency Management Committee, we should wait till they have a meeting in September, and they can talk to the chiefs.
Okay, so...
You know, as far as that goes. I think, so, I mean, I guess ultimately, for me, that when the job description, however it comes back, should be agreed upon, well, by the board, but only two of us in this instance can, you know, can comment on it. And then make sure, whatever that job description is, that the candidate is accepting of those roles and responsibilities, so that we, you know, in fairness to them as well, right? So, you know, I don't know. I was hoping we could just take care of the whole thing tonight, but if we want the Emergency Management Committee to have some input, we should probably just hold off another month to, you know...
So, then we would have to reappoint?
Yeah, that's fine.
I will follow up with...
I'll make that motion till September 30 to reappoint.
Okay.
But I think that the Emergency Management Committee, or Ed, not you, Ed, Ed Lesko, I mean, I'd like to get moving on this and just be done with it, but, you know, with everything that was coming under the Select Board, it's not under the Select Board. We just need to get moving so that the Emergency Management Director, as well as the chiefs in the Emergency Management Committee, all, you know, can move forward, and just knowing that this is, you know, a longer appointment.
Understand, yeah.
So, I don't know when their meeting, if Ed Lesko could, you know, have the conversation with the chiefs or with his own committee, get back to you, so that we can just wrap this up at our next meeting, hopefully, you know, once and for all. That's how I'd like to move forward.
And we'll give them -- I'll give them another month, but if they don't have anything in any of the month, then we make a decision on this.
Well, honestly, I think we're -- I think it's important to have the input of the Emergency Management Committee, but ultimately, I think the -- I don't want to say the professional, but, I mean, the chiefs ultimately, I think, kind of know what they're looking for in the Emergency Management Director. So, I'm just trying to be open and let them have some input, understand where the chiefs are coming from, maybe throw something else that the chiefs haven't thought of, and let's just get moving. I'd like this to be wrapped up yesterday, so if we can do that, I'm fine with that. So, I made the motion to extend the position till September 30. Once those chiefs and the Emergency Management Committee, you know, figure everything out, I think we need to get our current Emergency Management Director what the outcome is, and make sure that it fits within what they're looking for, for, you know, for a job description.
Absolutely.
I assume that Ed had some issues where they were unable to meet this past month.
Yeah, oh, no, I think he had said it that night, that with summer and vacations, I think, and having a majority, and people were away and all that, so...
Okay, motion made to extend another month, and I'll second it, and we'll just -- any discussion?
Just, I'd really like to get this over with once and for all, so it's next month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion moved. Motion carries. Topic four is the Town Administrator Report, Financial Management Update.
I had a conversation, conference call, last week with Justin Cole, and they are pretty much finalizing the first quarter for fiscal year 18, reconciling to the general ledger. There was a variance for the month of July. They've got that down to $950, and the person working on or doing the reconciliation feels confident getting that to zero. So, July and August took a little bit longer than they had anticipated, so they will be, you know, finalizing the quarter, the first quarter, very shortly. All the town meetings for fiscal year 18 and 19, articles and budget, have been booked. And then he will be meeting with us later this month, the Board of Selectmen and the Fin -- not this month, it's September, with the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. So, progress is being made. I think, once they get beyond that first quarter, it'll go a little smoother.
Building blocks, you know, you get pieces of it behind you, and then you...
Well, and keep in mind that they -- you're right, they're rebuilding fiscal year 18, so it just, yep, it happens in segments.
But our treasurer and collector's office is, are they -- they're completed with 2018, right?
They are.
Independent, I mean, their own office, and now it's a matter of...
That is correct.
Okay. That's awesome.
And they had said that they had some variances, and they had gone back and looked at those.
Sure.
And now they're working with Bay State on those variances.
It is far from an exact science, with all the transactions that take place, you know, but that's great. Good news.
Can I just ask you, I brought this up before, and I just wondered if it was going to someone. Mr. Roselli had talked about the $200,000 in capital projects that someone needs to go through, and we can reassign or recoup those monies for other projects. Who's going to be working on that, and when, or have they started?
They haven't...
What's going to be, is it going to be Bay State that does it?
It would have to be at this point, unless, you know, things change. But I would say, right now, and it's not something that they're working on right now. Justin is very much aware of the list of those items. Those are fund balance deficits, those projects.
So, is that like something way off in the future? We're not going to be able to access that?
I certainly would hope not, yeah. I mean, if we were to have a special town meeting, and if we don't, then we should be preparing to take care of some of those at annual town meeting, if they require town meeting action.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered where that's...
It's a matter of closing these projects out if the work is complete, and if there's available funds at the conclusion of that project, and we want to use, make, you know, use them for another project, we would have to appropriate that money, so that would require town meeting authorization.
Okay, anything else on that subject?
Nope, thank you.
We'll move to topic five. Marlene's handed me a letter that's been sent to the Architectural Board, asking for an extension on the Town Hall project, so maybe you can bring us up to date on that, Marlene.
I spoke with Kevin Shea and Brendan Stratton regarding moving forward with the project, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, we were communicating with the Architectural Access Board. They drafted a letter. They have actually been in contact by telephone with Mr. Hopkins at the Architectural Access Board, and hopefully, we'll get a response back from the Architectural Access Board relatively soon. In the meantime, they are -- Architectural EL is still working with numbers. They proposed, one of the costs is the fire pump that we would have to put in, and they're proposing that we have another water flow test on School Street as opposed to Main Street. I've discussed that with the DPW Director, and he thinks it's worth doing that test. So, they'll be lining that up with Phil.
And you also had a letter, went to CPA for extension, because...
I sent a letter to the Community Preservation Committee. Community Preservation had authorized a sum of money towards, contributed to the project, and with the restriction that it be used by September 1. So, I have explained to them that we did put the project out to bid, and the bids came in higher than we had estimated, and that we are looking at potential construction the end of the year, pending the weather.
Okay. So, worst-case scenario is, if we can't bring this project down by 350,000, then we may have to go in front of the town again and say, you know...
If we're going to ask for more money, yes.
We're going to meet the Architectural's Board, we're going to ask for more money. That's worst-case scenario right now. So, we'll see what happens. But we get that 200,000 on the projects, there's some money right there.
It's been sitting there a while, yeah. Well, and as I said, that fire pump was a significant cost to, you know, if we don't need that, but I think we still need to take a look at the other items as well.
And we did meet with them, trying to review some items that they could cut out or possibly scale back on, or make changes that they were going to take back to their office and look at, so... Topic six, Continued Old Business, HR Policies, so I'll give that back to you, Marlene, and some of the changes that you feel are necessary.
The payroll policy, this was reviewed at the previous meeting, and there were some clarification requested. And we actually, since that meeting, under 11.1, item one, it has been recommended by the treasurer to add, all new employees will be required to have direct deposit.
And that's pretty much what a lot of companies do today, so it's not like it's unusual.
And not that it needs to be part of the payroll policy, but would current employees be able to get direct deposit if they want to?
Oh, absolutely. And at some point, that is what they would like to achieve, right?
Yeah, makes sense.
But going forward, though, any new employee? Under 11.2, there was a request for clarification. So, in the middle of that paragraph, sentence starting with "further," any employee terminating service with the town must report to the treasurer's office... service with the town must report to the treasurer's office. And what had been inserted was with a copy of the resignation letter dated and signed, what's proposed now is to strike that. And the second sentence of that paragraph, it is the responsibility, the department head to forward all information regarding any changes to an employee's status, including a copy of resignation letter dated and signed to the town treasurer. Under 11.3, those changes were recommended previously, changing the work week from Sunday to Saturday and ends on Friday. On the second page, 11.5, no change there. That was what was proposed. There was a question if under 11.6 overtime, if an employee comes in during vacation leave, is the employee paid overtime? The treasurer's office has confirmed the employees are not paid overtime for hours worked during vacation leave.
Hmm, that's an interesting one. So if somebody's on vacation--
And they come in on a day that they're supposed to be on vacation, it's a regular day worked.
And they say they're vacation--
It's regular eight hours work, but they still have, they still have, oh, you mean, get paid as a vacation day and?
No, I think, if you choose to come in on a vacation day, then you're not on vacation. You're working.
Correct, that's right, that's right.
So you're not using a vacation day.
It's eight regular hours.
Correct.
Correct.
That's how it should, I mean--
Right, and then say, it was one day, 32 hours is vacation time, eight hours, I mean, 32 hours, yeah, vacation time, eight hours regular.
Yeah, I'd ask for clarification that last time, and that explains it.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So if the board is in agreement with the payroll policy?
Can I just ask a question before we go there? Because when I was reading that, 11.3 on the payroll policy, department heads may establish irregular schedules due to seasonal or other requirements, but it's kind of in conflict with, when I look at 3A, and it says that they will, an employee who, you know, has to work, come to work on time, do regular hours, and if they're not going to be doing the regular 40 hours, notify their supervisor. So how would that work?
Well, under--
Because some of them, like the DPW Director's hours are pretty regular unless he has to come in extra. Police chiefs are the same every day unless there's an emergency comes in extra.
So my interpretation--
And then the fire chiefs are just very different.
Okay, you're talking about department heads specifically, though.
Yes, because it says it can be regular, but I'm looking at--
Okay, my interpretation of 11.3 is department heads would make the decision to establish irregular schedules due to seasonal other requirements because they are a seasonal or temporary employee. Someone may be a temporary or seasonal employee, so they wouldn't have a regular schedule where a normal, because that says normal employee work. So someone who works a regular, part-time or full-time position, it would be different from--
Or the summer position.
From someone who is seasonal.
For the summer ones, okay.
So you could say somebody, you could hire somebody temporary to mow--
Or the summer kids.
Right.
And say you only have to work 12 to 4 or something.
Right, summer kids.
Or on an as-needed basis.
Or snowplowing, you could hire some seasonal employees to come in and snowplow and say, well, I don't want you coming in at certain hours, right? I mean--
Okay, thank you.
So does that, does that still needs to be clarified, though? Okay, okay.
I understand.
I'll make a motion to accept the Section 11 payroll policy as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
And motion seconded. Any discussion?
I think we just need to, in the second sentence, under 11.2, I think you need a comma right before, including a copy, just a grammatical thing.
Oh, okay.
But other than that, that was nothing as far as the content, so I'm good.
Any more discussion? Okay, motion made, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So be it, motion carries.
The next policy, Section 12, is tardiness and failure to report to work, and that is copied on the rest of that section, appears on the back of that page.
There's no changes in that one.
And there aren't, there isn't any recommended changes at this time.
Since there's no changes, do we still have to make a motion on it?
Yes, please, I would. And I don't know if there's any comments or feedback from the board, if you--
I'll make a motion to retain Section 12 as is.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just while we're on the HR, Marlene, this made me think of this. When you get, because I know you're going through it all, when you get to a point when it would be appropriate, I was thinking, I don't know if we should discuss or whatever or just talk to you, but coming up February of 19, all emergency services workers, the federal government has passed a bill, which the state also approved in December--
Right.
--of 17, where they're going to have to pass physical fitness.
Yes.
So I thought somehow that probably is going to have to be incorporated by then, but it's, you know, that was December, and now we're already coming up, you know, it's coming soon, so I figured that would be one of the ones--
I'll have to revisit that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That goes into effect.
What's the law?
February of 19. Back in December of 17, the federal government approved or passed a bill that all emergency services workers, all branches, had to pass a physical fitness test.
And what do they--
Whether they're full-time, part-time, wherever they were. And the state, Governor Baker, signed on to it in December of 17.
Okay.
And that's effective in February. So I thought, you know, it should be in our policy also.
All right, so under emergency workers, which--
It's a real wide range.
What's the range? Is it firefighters? Is it police officers? Is it--
Ambulance, the whole range.
Okay.
And there, even things that we don't have that are much smaller divisions, you know, to--
I'll get a copy of the statute, that bill.
It's very wide-ranging, yes.
Let's take a look at it.
But I just feel that should be part of our HR policy at some point, it's becoming law.
Okay, so as far as our business, do we have any unanticipated new business?
None for me.
Okay, if not, then the way I understand it is we're going into executive session, and we have three executive sessions, and if I read all three of them, then I can do it that way. I can make a motion, read all three--
Yes.
And then voice-voic'd and mention that we're not coming back into--
Regular session.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares an open meeting may be having a detrimental effect on negotiation, negotiating position of the public body. Executive Session Number 2 would be pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 2, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
And this is by, okay, motion made, motion, this by voice-voic'd.
Moriarty, aye?
Jaworski, aye.
Doherty, aye.
And we will not be coming back into regular session.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, John.